All right, it's 6:30. I'm gonna call this study session of City Council to order all councils present. We've got three items to discuss tonight. First up, we have a discussion about the Bemis House restoration as a potential partnership with Rotary Club. We have a discussion on local partnership funding and stadium district funding grant recommendations. And then finally, a discussion of boards and commissions. So we'll kick it off. The first one, we have us representatives of the Rotary Club of Littleton here to present to us, and I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager to rekindle the discussions that we had, what, eighteen months ago?
More than that, two and a half years ago.
Two and a half years ago?
Yeah, thirty months ago. So, good evening, and thank you members, thank you mayor, members of council, good evening. We are here tonight, thanks to the Rotary Club, who about two and a half years ago opened a discussion with the city about potential partnership for restoring the Bemis House. Bemis House, as we all know, has had some interior repairs, has a lot more potential and could serve the city in a more, you know, in a fuller way. So at that time, the city council had expressed some interest and directed staff to continue those conversations with the Rotary Club. Since then, staff has worked with the club on, you know, an array of issues. And so tonight, we're here to just have that next conversation with them. And I know, I'll just say what we're looking for tonight, council, is if council's supportive of this project council, this project concept, I'm speaking well tonight, we would like your direction to more formally develop a memorandum of understanding with the Rotary Club to develop this project further. And I know that the Rotary Club will also be speaking tonight, is interested in council's support so that they can more formally engage fundraising for the project. With that, I'll turn it over to our deputy city manager, Mike Chet, who's been on point for staff and can fill in a little bit more of what's been going on over the last number of months, and then introduce our Rotary friends today.
Excellent, thank you. So tonight, first of all, introduce to who's joining me at the table here. We have from the Rotary Zach Frederick and Heidi Taylor. And they've been kind of the lead in trying to keep this discussion moving forward to the point that we could bring it to you and get some direction from you. Also joined by Mr. Gene Green, who's an architect with historic preservation experience and, dare I say, passion. And he's kind of been helping flesh out the concepts that we'll talk a little bit about tonight. A little background, the city was, Mr. Bemis donated his house to the city as to be part of Stern Park right there. And so it's been with the city now for several decades. We currently have a lease for use of the residence and the garage with the Western Welcome Week. We've received some grant money to help restore the exterior of the house. And that's been, you know, real essential to preserving it, keeping it from deteriorating further. On the interior of the house, it's still beautiful. It's still really, really a neat historic home. But it is in need of preservation and revitalization. The city has a responsibility to preserve that house and to, you know, keep it in a condition that can, you know, carry into generations of the future. To that end, we are interested in exploring opportunities that might help us preserve that house. When Rotary Club approached the city previously, you know, I think that, you know, one of the main reasons why the conversations, you know, started going was because of the need the city has to preserve the Bemis House. Not sure exactly all the reasons why it didn't gain traction at that point in time. However, Rotary reminded us of our responsibilities to preserve the house and their desire to partner with us. It's kind of an interesting possibility. In this possible partnership, the city already included in our five-year CIP plan is money set aside in 2027 for preservation of the Bemis House. The Rotary Club is proposing that they would, you know, if the council is interested, we could draft a memorandum of understanding where they would partner with us and they would take that MOU, that memorandum of understanding out, and they would see if they could raise funds, you know, from different donors who might be interested in joining this collaboration. And basically acting like a multiplier effect on the funds the city contributes to the project in accelerating the preservation. And then the idea that you'll hear tonight is actually adding some space on the property that could be used for community gathering space, specifically hosting their regular meetings. But also, you know, the city council could hold a retreat there for your council if you wanted to. We have other nonprofits and service organizations in the city that are meeting in a variety of locations that would be, you know, interested in a space like that as well. Lift Up Littleton jumps right to mind. So, you know, to that end, one of the concerns expressed two and a half years ago by neighbors especially was that they felt like they had not heard about this, they didn't feel like they had an opportunity to contribute to the conversation. We made a commitment that we would try to update them when there was going to be further discussions such as tonight. And I've had that chance to exchange emails with, meet in person with, and visit over the phone with probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen neighbors or interested parties. And in your emails, you'll find a copy of the email communications that have been received. There's certainly, from the adjacent neighbors and other interested parties, I'd say significant concern about a change of use of the property, you know, what will that do to traffic? What about parking? You know, how much on-street parking could that bring to our neighborhood? How will that affect the general quality of life that we enjoy in our neighborhood today with the wildlife, with the ability of our kids to play in the park and whatnot? You know, will it change the feel of things? If, you know, there's no desire for this to be a private event rental space, that's not what we're proposing or talking about. And I think that puts, you know, some concerns to bed. But just the idea of late nights and just different use in the area is enough to create, you know, concern for some of the neighbors. On the opposite end of the spectrum, there's some people who are saying, hey, this is a fantastic idea, and we think the city should definitely continue these conversations and explore, see what the possibilities are. This is a very preliminary discussion. So if the council says yes, we think this is worthy of continuing to explore, then that could start that MOU process, fundraising process, and then, you know, at some point, if enough funds were raised, we could start the design process. In the pre-design and design process, there'd be significant community outreach, community engagement, opportunities to hear from people about their hopes and their fears and things like that that might come along with the different use of that property. Another thing worth noting is that Western Welcome Week does have an active lease for this property. So if we did move forward with a rejuvenation process for the house and construction process outside, any disruption of Western Welcome Week's use of the residence and/or garage would need to be discussed with Western Welcome Week and negotiate with them. They've shown a willingness to listen to proposed alternatives, and it would be at the city's expense. So if we did do this, we could need to provide additional space somewhere else during any period of disruption. So since they're amenable to those discussions, that shouldn't be something that stops us from continuing the conversation, but just something for you to be aware of. With that, I'll stop talking and turn it over to Heidi and Zach, as well as Gene Green, the architects, who will do most of the talking about what's on the slides you're about to see.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everyone, for your time. There's a lot of content to cover, so I'll keep it as an overview. Thanks to you and the Rotary Club and the city of Littleton. Also, thanks goes to Maya Bemis for aiding in historic research with photos, facts, and a wonderful tour. Studies a partnership between myself and JPU Architects, Pablo Andraga, and I work shoulder to shoulder on this. Regrettably, Pablo is not available this evening, but his work is. Also very helpful was Cindy Hathaway from Western Welcome Week for historic photos and a tour. You'll also see photos from the Littleton Museum collection. In the project background, we cover the importance of the property, the wonderful gift Ed Bemis made when he completed his family's home to become part of Stern Park and the 2008 exterior restoration project. Our work continues the efforts that began in 2005 when city council agreed to find a use that would promote the historic value and story of the property. In the 2007 state historic fund grant application, the goal was to operate for the benefit of local nonprofits and neighborhood groups.
Yeah, and I was here, I think it was about three years ago, presenting this idea to you guys. And it's evolved quite a bit since then. The members of my club have sort of encouraged its continued research. So that brings us here today, and really what the impetus for the whole idea was, is as a Rotary Club, we had a really hard time finding a place where we needed it. And we'd bounce around from one location to the other and realized it was kind of a challenge in Littleton to find a good spot. And living near the park, it occurred to my wife and I that the Bemis House could be turned into a great venue for that type of thing. So really what we're offering is leveraging the considerable network of Rotary. It's, I think, the largest nonprofit in the world. And Littleton's Rotary Club is one of the oldest in the world, I think, maybe the fourth Rotary Club, I believe. And we're interested in kind of throwing our weight behind a project like this and making this a great community asset and a community gathering space. Where we could hold our meetings and other nonprofits and community organizations could do the same. There are other meeting spaces in Littleton. There's some really nice ones. They're very expensive. There are some not as nice ones, the basement of Bemis Library, for example, is not expensive, but we're trying to go for that sort of middle niche and deliver on a really nice, high-class space that organizations can use for a very low price. So that's kind of the gist of it, and developing something that goes along with the house and fits in the neighborhood.
All right. Let's talk about the vision we have for the project. So we all know Edwin Bemis was one of the most influential citizens of Littleton during the 20th century. He served in a variety of elected and appointed positions, some for groups that he founded. He dedicated his life to service. Edwin once wrote, "He profits most who serves best." With that in mind, the vision is in the same spirit Edwin Bemis had when he gifted this home to the city of Littleton. A spirit of service by providing much-needed meeting space for our local nonprofits, neighborhood groups, and service organizations. The greatest public benefit for our community will be served. Now for some context, in the first photo here, you can see Ed Bemis in front of the Littleton Independent, where he was first an apprentice typesetter at the age of 11, and later became the publisher. And the photo to the right, this is 1922, shows Edwin in the Rotary office that he organized 103 years ago and served as president. So on the left, this early photo of the house is taken from what was then Edwin's father's Fred Alfalfa Field for the family dairy farm. It is now the War Memorial Rose Garden. And it gives us a sense of the neighborhood's early agricultural roots, farms and orchards. On the right, this 1920 photo during construction, you can see some of the corner rooms and the dormer are painted white. Those are the sections of the Shepherd Home, now the Colorado School for the Blind, that he bought and moved to be reassembled into the family home. This is important because it helps us understand the building and maybe why the staircase seems to have been built in such a small, resultant space. On this slide, we describe the essential character of the greater Stern Park neighborhood. Our goal is to preserve the neighborhood's scale and essential character. Here we look at the history of Stern Park and the War Memorial Rose Garden. This 1948 photo on the left shows Edwin and Catherine's grandchildren, Maya and David, enjoying the park just the same as kids still do today. By linking the history, context, and original intentions of Edwin Bemis, we can better than understand how to proceed. So the site analysis to follow shows how these three places are intrinsically related for a combined experience that is devoted to community. By analyzing all of these factors, we can be respectful and responsive to the site. Here we talk about Stern Lake. Here we talk about Stern Lake, South Lawn, how they're used. I think many of us have been to a Little GM concert on the South Lawn. Now let's look at circulation and access in and around the Bemis House, pedestrian and vehicular. This is not a parking study, but the existing parking lots are shown. Zach, did you want to, uh, talk about some of the meeting frequencies?
Yeah, I know there's some concern about number of meetings, size, volume of traffic and parking. I mean, I think what we were envisioning at this stage is something very similar to what already happens in the pavilions all summer. That, more or less, that size of meeting and that frequency.
How many people, how often?
So those are probably typically thirty to forty people, and I would say a couple times a week. And then maybe a, a few larger events throughout the year. I mean, we would probably hold our Rotary Christmas Party there one evening, and that could be seventy to eighty people. But, uh, yeah, that, that's probably the best way to describe what we were envisioning. Kind of more or less what's already happening in that park, um, but an indoor event space available to you.
It's a couple times a week?
Yeah.
You're saying Rotary events?
No, there'd be one Rotary event a week, and then, of course, we would want to make it available to the. Yeah.
But, but not as like a private event space, like rental?
No, the original concept was more in that direction. We sort of listened to the community feedback. Also with your help and fundraising, hopefully, um, we wouldn't need to do that to cover the cost of the project. We could more or less let people use it on a pro bono basis or just to cover the expenses of operating the property.
All right, looking at the building forms, the neighboring buildings, you can see that the neighborhood is very porous with very little fencing, resulting in a park-like feel throughout. The park is part of the neighborhood and the neighborhood seems like part of the park. This porosity is a feature that we seek to preserve.
There's, there's already a fence around Bemis House, right?
There's a little wire one.
Yeah, that's a fence.
It's, it's, uh, transparent.
Yeah, no, but I, I never jumped it, even though I was.
Land use. Looking at the land use, we have residential zoning in yellow surrounding the park, which is zoned OS for open space. The Bemis House is part of the park as originally intended by Edwin Bemis. The view sheds on the right, here we look at, uh, the view sheds from the site, which are largely east towards the park and west towards the War Memorial Rose Garden, the Orion Stern Fountain, and the Front Range Mountains beyond. Buildings on the site. We have two buildings on this point five-three acre site, the house and garage. Lot coverage is a modest eleven percent. Site setbacks, there are no setbacks in the open space zoning. But the surrounding SLR, Small Lot Residential, zoning will be followed for two reasons. One, to be respectful of the natural rhythm of the neighborhood. And two, to meet the Secretary of the Interior's standards, which require that any new construction not be placed in front of the historic building. It must be subordinate. Looking at the neighboring sites, to the north is a large, high-end, two-story, single-family residence. And to the south is the 1906 Washington Egerton Residence from the Littleton Legacy List. Topography. This corner lot is a high point, and the majority of the site is a gentle, sloping hill to the northeast. In the northeast corner, the grade steepens towards the lake. Site access in the middle there, the primary entrance is from Bemis Street to the west. There is also a gate to the north yard off Bemis Street. In the historic photos, the south entry off Shepherd Avenue was used by the Bemis family. Views of the site, since it's a corner lot, the site is viewed very well from the streetscapes. The pedestrian level view from the park is also very nice at the northeast as you're walking the paths around the lake. Sun angles and path. So we can see from this basic shade study that the yard between the two buildings is well shaded. In historic photos, the family used the back patio as a shady gathering spot, family barbecues and get-togethers. Vegetation, there are well-maintained, significant mature trees, as we know, and hedges on the site. The north property line would benefit from some privacy screening, you feel. Now on to the program analysis. We look at four areas of use. At first, by understanding the existing uses by Western Welcome Week and Historic Littleton, we can better understand and be respectful of their needs. The residential scale of the spaces should, also needs to be respected. For example, the living room should still serve as a small meeting room, and the downstairs bedrooms should remain small offices. We also analyze the program elements for the new community room, the existing garage, the outdoor site, and the landscaping. Continuing with the program analysis, as Zach mentioned, the majority of monthly meetings by these groups are between thirty and forty people. Uh, this graphic shows area calculations and table layouts for a yearly banquet or a Western Welcome Week event of seventy to a hundred. So we started for, in the high-use, uh, events. Along with the restrooms and the service areas, a modest twenty-three-hundred-foot, square-foot building footprint would serve those needs. And here we go, room by room, through the Bemis House, which has a footprint of roughly eighteen-hundred square feet. Now, the upper level is not accessible due to the narrow and steep staircase. We will have to look further into what limitations that would bring from a code perspective and use. Currently, it's mostly storage up there. Here is our due diligence from a regulatory perspective. The 2008 State Historic Fund grant came with a covenant requiring approval from History Colorado. That is why the Secretary of the Interior's standards must be adhered to. When I say the standards, I mean standards for the treatment of historic properties, and that's a federal-level regulation. We are analyzing two approaches, which have different requirements within the standards. Option A, an addition. If we were to attach a community room to the existing Bemis House, it must follow the standards for additions. The 2022 review of option A by the State Historic Fund staff was well-received, and they directed us to Preservation Brief Number Fourteen. New exterior additions to historic buildings, preservation concerns. One of those main concerns is that the new addition should be smaller than the historic building. It should be subordinate in both size and design to the historic building. And what that did was limit our seating numbers to around fifty-five. Option B, a new building, if we do not attach to the existing house, we are less limited in the new design. The limitations on the size, scale, and design of new construction may be less critical the farther it is located from historic buildings. So by keeping space between the buildings, a new building is less limited, to be sure. Now let's look at our goals and objectives. As Zach said, meeting space is scarce, scarce and expensive in Littleton. The goals and objectives seek to rehabilitate the Bemis House interior, provide space for the current nonprofits, Western Welcome Week and Historic Littleton, while also providing space for Rotary, Lift Up Littleton, and others. Then the vision of providing the greatest public benefit for our community will be served. Now we're at our preliminary concept alternatives. Option A, we looked at pros and cons. One of the pros was that it allowed for direct sharing of main-level program elements, like the kitchen, board, meeting room, print room, office space, without walking outdoors. But that pro was also a bit of a con, and I put it there because sharing of main-level program elements requires a much greater degree of coordination and scheduling between multiple organizations. So you can look at it as a pro or a con. Option B, the new building, pros, it allows for larger programming flexibility and simultaneous use. It creates an interesting central courtyard, effective for the south yard. It creates an entry garden opportunity on the northwest corner. And there's less alterations to the Bemis House would be required by keeping the existing uses largely unchanged. So this is a three de-rendering that Pablo did of the massing alone. This is not an actual building design. We just took the size requirements and started playing around with the massing. This bird's-eye view shows how the new building responds to the park. When you're standing on that corner, the lake is, uh, it's just beautiful. This view from Bemis Street shows how the northwest yard could be an open garden with a quiet lunch spot for staff members. Interpretive kiosks describe the history of the site and the Bemis family to visitors. And then this view from Shepherd Street from the south shows how the new building helps to create a nice shaded courtyard to enjoy, much the same as the Bemis family did. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Is the garage, can it stay in the garage?
Yes. Well, it's going to be used for outdoor storage space, you know, you might think of tables that can come out into this, into that south courtyard.
It doesn't look like any things really happened in the garage. It's going to be pretty much stays the same.
Be stabilized. It, it needs, it needs to be re-pointed.
Is that brick?
What's that?
Is that brick?
Uh, no, that is what's called structural clay tiles. It's a terra cotton product that in the early 20th century was the, basically the CMU of the day. Um, it was modular, and it was, it was meant to be stuccoed over, but Edwin absolutely loved the way it looks just like that. And he left the outside unfinished. The doors to the east, the big sliding, uh, doors, they need to be rebuilt. And that door in the courtyard there is not original. We would probably, uh, try to look at the historic photos, which do show that door, and, uh, rebrand that one.
Just want to reframe kind of what we're looking for from our council tonight. Obviously, the Rotary Club has done a lot of work to kind of develop this concept, and we're thankful for it. Um, we're interested in gauging council's support for the concept tonight. And, um, you know, I think comments on what we're seeing in the, the general, um, design al- alternatives are, are welcome. Um, but we also know there's still a whole lot of work to do on what this partnership looks like, and that's, I think, what we need first. Um, if council directs further development of the concept, uh, we'd like to take this concept to our historic, Historic Preservation, uh, Commission, um, as, as part of this, this, this process. And we also need to develop, um, the MOU that will govern kind of the roles and responsibilities for each of us. There is a, a list of kind of the, the, the principles that we've been talking about with Rotary Club in the staff, in the staff communication. I'll hit them briefly because I, I think these are important for, for council and the, the public to hear as, as council offers some feedback. Um, you know, first is that the, the city will re, will retain ownership and control of the property. Uh, the, the Rotary Club, by virtue of their efforts and their, um, their contributions to the project, would have priority access to the, uh, building. The building would be used for nonprofit, city Rotary Club and other civic organizations, not for the, for private events and parties and weddings and those sorts of things. Uh, since it is a city facility, final, final design and, uh, construction would be subject to the, the city's procurement's policies. Um, the city will take the lead on communication with, with neighbors in the vicinity of the project site. And, uh, I think council's aware, but the city is programmed, doesn't mean finally committed, but programmed, uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the 2027 year in the capital improvement program. Again, this would be subject to final appropriation by the city council in the 2027 budget. But those principles are what, where we've started in terms of this, this MOU that, um, with your direction, we would, would come back to you with and then continue to develop the project.
He was the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, he jumped to the next slide.
So, um, just to be clear, are who will own? I mean, I think the fundamental question here is about whether we want to build another building on that space. So whether it's a building or an, an attachment to the, I mean, that's the fundamental question. I, I don't think there's any question, maybe there is, but because we disagreed already a couple times, but I don't think there's any question that we want, we're happy to rehabilitate the house and make sure that it's, you know, sustained as a core part of our infrastructure, the house and the garage. And I don't think there's any question that we want to maintain our commitment to Historic Littleton and to Western Welcome Week. It feels like what you're asking us is to, do you want to consider building a new building, having a new building, another building built on the, what is essentially an empty lot now next to the Bemis House? Is that about right?
Can I back it up even like a concept further than that? Like?
Sure.
I mean, I think to, you know, not trying to disregard your presentation, and I appreciate all the work that you've done to bring it to us, but I also think this council, it's worth deliberating in terms of our, again, facilities and capital planning and how to fund things. There's an offer on the table right now that for a degree of, you know, sharing in some regard to be worked out in an MOU, that an investment be made by a local, well-respected and, and quite frankly, a, a treasured nonprofit. I'll go ahead and say that, right? But that does come with giving up a degree of control, and I think this council then needs to deliberate. Is the entirety of an investment, is there a possibility that this council would actually move on an investment on this geologic time scale to renovate it ourselves, to retain the entirety of control over the facility? Or is this the most, the best and highest use of both our funds and timing in order to preserve it?
Two different questions. I think.
Sure.
Robert's is a little more foundational.
Well, my, my question is, it is further back as in, is this something that we as a city would do with or without the Rotary period?
And I guess I'm arguing we would. We own that building. It's our responsibility to maintain the building, uh, the two buildings. I, I mean the garage when I say, the hu- the house and the garage. And so I, I feel perfectly comfortable committing to, you know, rehabilitating and improving it and making it accessible. That feels like that's our obligation already. It's the, it's the, the, you know, the question is about the second building. That feels like the, I, I, obviously after we fix the lake, I'm happy to fix the house.
Well, that's kind of where I'm getting at though, right? Is that like you now have a full deck of capital plans and facility plans in front of you. Where does this fall in? And, yeah.
Well, right now, we've agreed it falls in kind of in a couple of years, uh, before the lake.
I don't read anything on that.
Right, that's.
Well, it's part of our.
That's the question.
Well, it's part of the, our capital improvement plan that we have passed. We've tentatively agreed. So for the house, if we build an extra building, who's going to own the building? What's the, what's the proposed owner? And then, and it feels like, again, just speaking about the extra building, there's kind of a, a risk that we would be entering into, which would be what would happen if Rotary Club couldn't sustain their part of the investment, right? There's a little bit of a risk for us in that we may have to cover some agreed to, and that we haven't even got to what we're agreeing to, but I'm just trying to talk out the negatives. One is the, the risk of, of, um, Rotary Club not being able to make the investment. The other risk with, is that, you know, it's going to require some staffing. Like you're going to need a, uh, people to clean up, you're going to need people to. Like you're gonna need a, uh, people to clean up, you're gonna need people to fix the roof, and you're gonna need people to schedule events. I mean, there's gonna be some amount of staffing and that could be a risk that the city is, uh, a risk of future costs, which is, you know, an FTE or two, which is not a huge part of our budget. But I'm just trying to think about what are the risks of proceeding with this agreement? Is there any other risks that people have identified?
No.
Yeah, you know, I, I love this idea. I love the idea that Rotary coming to us, looking to partner. I think that's what it's all about, the city open one another. I think you hit all the other points right on the head, uh, Robert, in that, yeah, there are some risks. But I, you know, for this conversation, we're just looking to get the ball started. And I feel like, uh, they've done their part on presenting something pretty tangible here. And I think, uh, I'm in favor of getting things started. I don't think there's any guarantees, Mike, right? That, you know, that the MOU, I mean, is there a guarantee to some extent in that MOU or?
We, we would work out those things to come to a mutual understanding. But, but yeah, I mean, there, there's so many things that have to happen before we ever start construction, including opportunity for council to, to weigh in and make the decision. But the MOU would basically give confidence to everybody that their efforts could result in a, in a, in a design and construction of a project.
Yeah, I've talked to a lot of people at Rotary and they're going home to get going on that. Uh, and this is, this is the next step for, for them to get doing their fundraising and some other things.
Just the city manager, please.
To the, the questions or comments about capital priority, I think from staff standpoint, the opportunity to, to partner and leverage the, uh, leverage the, leverage the city's funding, which by the way, we haven't even really talked about, in concept, there would be, you know, kind of a, a shared contribution from the city and Rotary. And I know there's been some interest with another, uh, nonprofit in the, a community who's invested in community connection and nonprofit work. So, you know, I think those would be kind of those pillars of funding. From staff standpoint, the opportunities to capitalize on that leverage really accelerates this to that, you know, timeframe of twenty twenty seven, when it works for our potential partner. I think without this, you know, staff would wanna re, uh, consider where this, this, this kind of project would fall. You know, we think that there, there is a, a lot of potential advantage to the, a community space that we don't, you know, really have like this in this type of space. But admittedly, the, uh, timing is accelerated by the, the opportunity to leverage.
Yeah, and Deputy City Manager, Jim, you had mentioned, you know, that there would be, still be plenty of opportunity for council to have input. But we've got a ton of, and I know this isn't a regular council session.
You're preempting me. I was gonna ask, just can I jump in? So we have a lot of audience members, just a show of hands, how many people are here with the Rotary Club? How many people are neighbors? How many people support this? How many people are opposed to this? Okay, that's all. Thank you. I was just trying to get, we haven't had a lot of feedbacks. I just want that. So, sorry, continue.
Maybe one thing to just point out, some of the neighbors are Rotary Club members.
I understand. That's fine. That's, I wasn't trying to be, say, I know. I, I will say I'm a neighbor. I live a block, two blocks from there. So.
I, I live on South Bemis, um, like not too far. So the only, the only point I was trying to make is while we're also, our input there is, is important, we need to have those discussions. It's important to involve, you know, the neighbors as well. And so I just wanna be clear that this is truly an initial step. And there's gonna be lots of opportunity for folks to, to maybe meet with Rotary about intended uses. I don't wanna speak for you. I'm not a member of the Rotary, but that kind of, you know, involvement.
Yeah, and to that point, you know, Jim mentioned that the city will take the lead on communication. So we won't rely on someone else. We will make sure. And, and all of the communications that I've received so far, I've created a, 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 a spreadsheet of phone numbers, mailing addresses, those kind of things, so that I can, can keep people updated. So Jim mentioned that, that, that a potential, uh, step in the near future would be presenting this concept to the Historic Preservation Board. So I can send out an email to everybody who have their emails, to the interested parties, to say, on this date, this discussion is gonna happen. There's opportunity for public comment that night as well.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. You talked about the footprint of the current house being eighteen hundred square feet. Okay, and then there's that little garage.
Right.
What would the, what, and at eleven percent lot coverage? What is the, um, square footage of the community room? And what would be the?
The footprint was, we feel that we can get it done in twenty-three hundred square feet.
Twenty-three hundred square?
So it's two stories. We have some program down in the basement.
But, so it would be total, what would the footprint be? Would it be half that?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred.
Oh, with the house together or just the?
Just the community room. How much space does it take up?
Twenty-three hundred square feet.
But that's not secondary to an eighteen hundred square foot building.
Right. We, uh, new construction is less limited than the Secretary of the Interior standards.
So now what is the lot coverage then?
I didn't calculate.
Twenty-four percent, that rough one?
That sounds about right. It was in the twenties, you know.
Okay, um, let me ask another question. When you look on, okay, you look on this, um, rendering and there doesn't look like there's much space between the community room and the house. But if you look on slide sixteen, it looks like it's really far apart.
Artistic renderings, right? They're not.
There, and there it looks like we're, like, almost like we're subduing.
It's, it's, it's not on the slide. That's the, that's the neighbor's house.
That's the, that's the.
Oh, that's nothing. Okay, okay.
That's existing, if I should tell the word.
So is this allowed under the code in small lot residential or would we have to do an exception?
But it's not small residential.
What is it?
It's open space.
Open space. So it is that, is there any code restrictions?
No.
Where I'm having angst is, yes, we want Bemis House revitalized and renovated. We know it, it's, it needs help. But to do that, we have to have this community structure because that's the interest of Rotary is a bigger.
They're not mutually exclusive.
No, but that's, if, if we said to them, and let me ask you this, yes, we'd like to renovate it and you get priority and all this stuff, but no community room, would you continue, you would not be interested?
No, it wouldn't be.
So in essence, we have to have the community room in order to get the renovation.
Well, this is, there's, again, this is a more fundamental question. I think if you want the entirety of design control over a project, then you can't take somebody else's money. And if you would like the entirety of the control of the project in every facet of its artistic development, from soup to nuts, then you build it into your capital plan in a hundred percent in its entirety.
Right, but what, I don't think anybody has any problem with renovating Bemis House and letting Rotary involved. I think where the angst comes is that community room. Here, now we've got two big structures on a small lot, whether it's open space or not. And that's where I struggle. And there's no parties, but Rotary would have a party. Maybe it's only once a year, could be a slippery slope. Well, Rotary has a party, then city, then the city council could have a party. Well, city council has a party, well, then the nonprofit has a party. Before you know it, we have some of the, some of the issues the neighbors have brought to us. Parking, vendors, uh, people, all that stuff.
Our, our parties are very quiet.
Well, I, I, I'm just bringing up some other thing. Everybody's looking at the MOU. I'm looking at the character of the neighborhood and how it looks and the impact of a community room that could be more than just a once a week meeting for Rotary on the community.
Well, so, so, um, but yeah, I think moving, cause I, even, we haven't really have, has there been any discussion of kind of who's paying for what?
Just general share of a total project.
Right, so you could easily see a situation where the, you know, we pay for the rehab, rehabilitation of the building and, and, and then the rest, then the other half is just building the building, building the community, right?
Can you go to slide twenty-one? I mean, it's the list of that. And so I had some questions about this because, you know, I think we're, we are talking about two different things, rehabbing Bemis House. And Rotary, you know, the, the top goal is to find a home for Rotary, from Rotary's perspective here. And so I think that's where they're coming with money. I think there is some benefit to say, hey, someone can help fund something. Are these all the city's priorities and goals too? I mean, I have a question for Rotary. Does, would Rotary view this as the Rotary House, basically?
That was originally the intention.
What's the intention right now? Would it be the Rotary House? Would it be your facility?
Yes, it depends on how the fundraising is split though. If we're carrying the lion's share of that load, then yeah, I would imagine it would.
So with all your other, so Rotary does lots of grants, lots for other organizations too, do you not?
Yes.
Do you have the same kind of ownership with those grants? Like, hey, we're giving you this money, there's strings attached to it or? I, I'm trying to see if, from the city's perspective, you know, I, I think there's some angst from other organizations and the community that it looks like the city's giving Rotary House a prime piece of land, um, as their property. And I think that, you know, I like the idea of having Western Welcome Week and Historic, uh, Littleton. I think one of the concerns that I have is that it's coming from Rotary and I would much rather a broad, like lift up Littleton would be a better thing. Hey, we have a community of organizations that want to do this. It's not going to be Rotary's house. It's gonna be a community, um, house. So I, I mean, I'll say, I do like the idea of having a community event space there in theory. But I think how it's managed and utilized there, um, there's some concerns. I, you know, I've heard from my neighbors that live right around there that there is a lot of concern of changing the character of how that facility is used. And so there's some advantages to it, but there are also disadvantages to having a community event space there. And so I guess the question for Rotary is, you want a, a, a meeting space, like you want a home. Why here and not some other place that you're just buying a lot and building your own building?
Well, because it's really being done with that lot.
What'd you say?
Nothing is.
Missed you, sorry.
Nothing is really being done with that lot, other than the Western Welcome Week office. So it's an underutilized great asset that the city has. And there's historic significance. Ed Bemis was the charter member of our club. He was the president of Littleton Rotary Club. That was his house. You know, we've talked to the family. There's general support from them for the concept. He was a proud Rotarian. And it kind of completes a trifecta because he's got, you've got the Bemis Library, which is a public space. I believe at the Littleton Museum, there's a Bemis Homestead House. It's a public space. And then the Bemis House in Stern Park is not a public space. So we felt it was very historically significant to zero in on that property. And just to correct one thing, it was never the intent for that to be Rotary's property. It was a, it was a lease from the city.
They got these weekly meetings you have. I mean, couldn't you have them in, I mean, if it was maybe redesigned and the kitchen was updated, could you have them? I don't know how Cindy feels about this, but could you have them in the first floor as a room?
That was the original idea, but there's so many restrictions on what you could do with the house because of the historical preservation. We just couldn't get it big enough.
Well, the short preservation is to some extent the outside and how it looks. The inside, there's less restrictions.
Well, they're, they're under other restrictions though. Correct me if I'm wrong, because of the federal landmark.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
I would say though, it, it feels small in there. If you, if, you know, if you had twenty-four people in there, it would, it would, it would be very cozy.
I mean, you're looking for a space, you know, to part with the city. I mean, could you guys have meetings in, in this room?
Certainly could, yeah.
I mean, what you're really looking for is, I mean, the Christmas party is once a year. It's just really the weekly space. And a- again, I don't think anybody in council, correct me if I'm wrong, would want some sort of partnership to refurbish the house itself. It's the community room that changes everything.
Our, our intent was, I mean, yeah, we can find a meeting space. We can meet in the basement of Bemis Library. We thought this would be a nice thing to do for the community. And we've raised a lot of money for other similar such projects in the past. I think Love Inc. was a very large project. Project here.
And also longer tables. And I think that's going back to the lift up Littleton perspective that, you know, that's fifty plus organizations that came together and put out that project. I can't tell you how many diners and dining room tables, et cetera, it took to make that happen over the last year. So yes, we have a great need for community space. Look at East Community Center. That was fully subscribed within six months because there was such a need for places that 501Cs could go to that wasn't overpriced, that they could handle because of what they were doing servicing the community. And we now have another opportunity, as we know with break bread, et cetera, and having lost some other, uh, servicers at this point. So it's not just Rotary. It is a community service place. So Rotary wants to step up because we have some heart in the game with P, with Bemis, okay? And I know, uh, Zach and others have looked for space, et cetera. And this just seems to be the one that we could work well on with the city on completing this project. Any questions to that?
Well, I mean, I think from the city's perspective, you know, these are, this, the goals, there's a good list of goals, but I think the city perspective would have a different kind of order and priority, I think. You know, rehab, number four is probably the city's top goal priority. And, you know, I think to, to Steve's kind of point of, you know, we have, I don't know if it's agreeing with your point, but to your point, we have a lot of needs and capital and this doesn't, I mean, adding a community room doesn't seem like it was like, you know, two or three years ago, the city like, oh, we need this here. It's a priority for the city. It's a priority for Rotary. I'm not saying it's, unless, you know, a bad priority. But I think if we had that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, I'm just playing devil's advocate. If we didn't move forward with this, could we use that money elsewhere, maybe for a lake or something? I know, I know. I'm, I'm just saying, how, how do we prioritize this? And I do think the allure of having a funding partner is a strong.
The interesting thing of this.
Some kind of understanding and perhaps we can put it in a memorandum.
Well, that's what I mean, my thought is if, like, I know I, when Zach was like, no, we wouldn't, don't, you know, raise money. I was looking at how can we, would Rotary have still raised money to help do something with this if it wasn't like Rotary's home?
Potentially, sure. I mean, we do a lot of good stuff for the community, so why not?
Well, I'm interested that for a community, providing a community space is not one of the priorities.
It's what's driving this though. Number nine.
Yeah.
Okay, you're right.
So Mike, what is the restriction on a landmark property on the inside?
I, I don't know. I, you know, I, I, I do understand that there, there would be a goal of, of restoring the historic nature of the inside. I don't know what the restrictions, I'm sorry.
I, 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 my pers, and we'd have to ask the historic expert, it's the outside is what's the concern. It's, you know, like the buildings in downtown Littleton, the insides can be very modern, but they have to keep the outside. That's the important part. So what if, what if we could make, expand the meeting space again? Where does Cindy go? But, uh, you know, maybe she goes upstairs or I don't know, whatever. And you have a, a nicer, open up the downstairs. And then, um, then you have the space for their meetings. The only thing you don't have, um, uh, you have a limitation of twenty-four, twenty-five. You couldn't do like fifty or seventy-five like you could in the community room. Then you have everything. Today at our meeting, we had thirty-five people. And could you, and is it possible if you opened that up? And I mean, even the downstairs, what are those rooms, bedrooms, and you made it more of a one space room? I, I, I'm just giving an idea.
We're ten meetings ahead of what this meeting is. And my, I think I'm gonna continue on with my thought. It does sound like we are interested in Rotary's investment, the details of how that investment is shared, who has say over what architectural components, the size, the utilization of space, the parking, the hours of operation. All those things can be hammered out in a memorandum of understanding. The question is, are we willing as a city to move this up in our capital improvement plan for the benefit of seeking or getting increased investment? My perspective is yes. We have loved this thing into the ground. We're debating like hours of operation and like orientations of things. This thing is decomposing as we speak. And we can't sit here and just talk about a decomposing building as if it's gonna spring up and renovate itself.
I, I, I disagree. I, I, the MOU and how it works, I think it has to do with the community room. I think that's the essence of it. Rotary may not be in unless we have a community room. Community room has all sorts of impacts on the character and how it looks and how it's used. I mean, I, I think that's the bigger picture.
So you can put the details of, if you are, say, for example, contributing seventy-five percent of capital improvement and Rotary is doing twenty-five percent, you may have seventy-five percent more, say, in terms of the size, square footage. size, square footage, orientation, look, feel, and occupancy of a community room.
But I don't know if Rotary is wanting to go, are you gonna run down that path if you can't have this key?
That's the negotiation to happen.
That's what we're asking tonight is.
It's also based on if there is a community room, that we can still have a, a preservation and renovation of the Bemis House. But I don't know if you, Mike, know, have, what rough cost for just a restoration of Bemis House versus cost of restoration plus construction of a new?
I don't know.
I mean, just.
Gene, do you, do you, do you have any ideas?
I'm loathe to put a number on that.
Yeah.
A contractor looks at it, telling me, looking at it as a restoration, because if you've seen the historic photos that Maya produced, it was just gorgeous inside.
Beautiful.
It's, it's still has some of those gorgeous features. I would, I would hate to lose them.
Yeah. And we wouldn't. So that is one of the reasons why we didn't want to just expand the main room. Now that we know that it was four, it was three different rooms from the sanitarium that were moved. It kinda makes it awkward. It would be really difficult to just open up the building. So that's why we think those interior spaces need to be respected.
I was just looking at, for another solution to get rid of the community room and, and meet your needs.
And, and, you know, some of the, some of the communications that we received is the city hasn't looked out to invite any other feedback. There's other, other people who might be willing to raise money or donate money and those kind of things. So, so there, there is certainly, that, you know, presenting this as a, just, you know, binary option is probably not appropriate. But, you know, I, I think there's, I think that your conversation that you just said, do we wanna leverage this particular proposal? That's really, that's really where we're at.
On the leverage issue, I think it's completely likely if we do fifty-fifty, that we spend all our money rehab in-house and, and Rotary spends all their money building the new space. I mean, I think it's, it, what it does is move up the rehabilitation faster in our schedule, which I'm okay with, because I think you're right, it is falling apart and we need to take care of it. But I think it's completely possible that we're essentially, you know, creating, you know, we're, we're getting, we're, you know, we're getting a, we would be getting a new community space out of, out of this that, you know, for allowing them to build it on our land, which then the land is not really, you know, that lot is not being used. And so.
Well, and we do have community spaces that maybe are not at the level that Rotary runs. I mean, we have Bemis Library, we have um the museum, we have space here. I mean, there are spaces for nonprofits to meet. We met here for lift up Littleton. I mean, there are spaces, they're not, maybe they're more commercial, uh, more institutional than you would care for, but there are spaces.
It's a park. Are we gonna build everything on the rest of the park just because it's not being used? Cause it's still part of Stern Park.
Well, the, the lot is fenced off.
I know, but it's part of Stern Park.
It's, it's, it's trees adjacent to.
I, it's open space. It's an open space, so.
But it's not publicly accessible.
Right, I know, but I'm just, I'm just playing devil's, I'm gonna disagree with you, I'm just.
I, I, yeah, but it's.
I think you both are right.
Oh, yeah, no, we.
Off and that's not, right, that's not.
So, but, uh, but, so if there's gonna be an MOU, I mean, the things that I want in the MOU are we'd absolutely have to conduct a parking study. We absolutely have to create a, an ongoing consultation group of neighbors. The building, the new build, this is way too far in the weeds, but I think the, the new building has to be a lower profile than the existing building.
And I think, you know, I know the goal here was to get an MOU, so Rotary could start fundraising. Sadly, I think that's still putting the cart before the horse here because we have, we're talking about community involvement being proactive. The fact that we have how many members of the community here, we haven't gotten any emails or calls about it, makes me think that the community stills unaware and to say the city is having an MOU with Rotary to build a new building seems like it's too early. I think we should, I definitely think we should still continue discussions and figure out what could work or what won't work. But the fact that, I mean, this is, this council's priority is to be more proactive with community engagement. I think we're dropping the ball there, or at least the ball hasn't been thrown back at us yet.
Sure, so, so you, when you look in your email, you'll see a, 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 a collection of emails.
I've removed my emails since.
Exactly, yeah. Sorry about that. So, so they, there, there certainly has been outreach and, and.
We're getting a bunch of emails before a meeting. Jeff, the, like, hours before a meeting is not.
They, they came from me hours for me. They, I've been, we've been talking for, 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 for a week, two weeks. I've been talking with.
We've been talking for a week or two weeks and you're asking us to sign an MOU?
No, not sign an MOU. Draft an MOU.
I know, but still, you're asking to draft one and then sign it.
Give us direction and then bring that back to you for further discussion.
I, I agree with Mayor. I think we're premature. I think we need to do some formalized community engagement. I am not against working with Rotary. I think it, it's, it's a great option and I would like to continue discussions. As you can tell, where I have angst is building on the community room on the property on, on, on this open space, the house next to the house practically. And that's my angst. And um I would like to see the Bemis House refurbished, whether we do it, we do it together, whether we use it together. I'm, I'm still open to discussions on that.
You know, I, one, one possibility is to schedule this presentation for the Historic Preservation Board, which would allow public comment, would allow advice from, from your, you know, board.
I mean, I, I mean, I think what Rotary is, is saying is they want a home and they don't have meeting space for that size. I think council, I mean, we've had issues with like the state of the city for very large event spaces, but I don't know if, how many, what was the capacity? Seventy-five to a hundred roughly? Is there a gap of meeting spaces? I mean, I'm looking from the, not from Rotary's perspective, from the city's perspective, for community groups to hold meetings for seventy-five to a hundred. If there is a gap for that, then I think there's an urgency for that. If there's not a gap, I mean.
I think there's a gap.
This room, Hudson Gardens, I mean, where are there other, I mean, I don't think we have enough information to say, yeah, we need another community space.
What, what other groups? I keep hearing other groups are interested, but nobody, no other group is, you know, they've heard about this project now for over a year probably, has, has, does it seem to be approached by anybody else, uh, having some interest in, we're doing something with this?
Western Welcome Week certainly has.
Well, certainly, we, we get, yeah, we get that. And, and somebody mentioned parking, you know, you think of the Rose Garden, you think just to the north of that Rose Garden, there's a huge field right down there. I don't, we, we normally use that field for, for um.
Mulching?
Mulching.
For those that remember.
Big windstorms or whatever. So that's, you know, there is, I, I think, uh, I think a lot of neighbors would feel a lot more comfortable, you know, utilize that space. I'm, I'm not sure even who owns that space, but.
City owns that.
Yeah.
It's in a flat plain, so.
Back to what Steve was saying, I think, I think, you know, we, it's time to move on with this and I think you know, doing the community engagement, all that type of stuff can happen during the MOU. It's, we're not setting anything in stone, we're just getting things in motion.
Hundred percent. Mike, oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 I, I just, we, we can make a memo, say whatever we wanted to say. Right? Like, with, with understanding, that's literally in the name of it, but like, if we want community engagements, a memo of what?
Uh, understand, okay, sorry. Uh, like, if we want community engagement to be a piece of this, we can build that into the memo, like.
What if the community says, we are not interested?
You can build contingencies into the memo. Like, what, what, we, how often do we have a proactive community group coming to us saying, hey, we wanna partner up with you? It, with, with, to the tune of like hundreds of thousands, if not more, yeah, millions, with this kind of opportunity? And, and, and being flexible, cause I'm hearing flexibility. And I'm, I'm hearing like, yeah, you know, like we want this to be open for folks, but we, you know, our previous one, we, we wanted to look at private event space and now we've moved on from that. Like, uh, there's, we, we can work this all out in the memo of understanding. It is absolutely plausible to do that and it's just the first step. Like, this, this is not locking us in, it is not a contract. We can get it all, we can, we can all work together to make this work. And I don't wanna stymie, yeah.
The challenge is the cost, so we've raised about ten thousand dollars to pay for what you just saw. Through selling beer at the Little Jam, in part. Gene has donated a lot of his time up and beyond those architecture costs. The next step would be fifty to sixty thousand dollars in additional architecture, if I remember your proposal correct. I can't persuade my group to invest that kind of money for tenuous commitment. So that's kinda where we're at and I, I completely understand where you're coming from though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel comfortable.
Can I give council member? Peter's a chance, before you guys have your third and fourth go. Six or seven.
Yeah, I think you gave me the benefit of the doubt. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I was gonna say, I appreciate your patience and I appreciate the relationship. I agree with Stephen Patrick. I, it feels to me like it makes sense to have some sort of an agreement to present to the neighbors when we get engagement, otherwise it's just too open-ended to even know where to start with what we're asking. I don't have a strong opinion on the community room or not the community room. I feel like it, it gets dicey what you mentioned with what groups get to use it, when do they get to use it, how, I mean, we've had some angst around how often we shut down Main Street and stuff like that. So I think people like to know what's gonna happen around them and honoring the neighbors and the parking and all of the things is a part of it, but I feel comfortable moving forward with working that out. Doing the next steps.
But the MOU can't include a promise that there will be a community.
Right.
Right.
And to some, the mayor raised a good point about like need for event space and I think that is certainly something that can be debated. From purely the city's perspective, this is more like mitigation of a liability. You have a decomposing, derelict building and next to one of our better.
I don't know if it's derelict, I mean, Cindy, Cindy, you're not operating out of a derelict building, are you?
Derelict building, that's a home reckons. I mean, like, it's, i- i- it's a liability more than it is an asset currently. And like, I think you can look at it from the perspective of like, can it become an asset? Yes, how much? I think that's a question that can be answered. You can also look at it from the fact that, again, you're limiting a liability as it currently stands because that thing is just, you know, it's a piece of crap. Yeah, and, and we've not done anything with it because this is where we got, we got stuck in the weeds rather than starting to explore those opportunities. I think we need to explore opportunities for raccoon habitat. But honestly, in terms of the preli, preliminary development costs, site surveying, things of like modeling, all that kinda stuff, going through code, looking at permitting costs, I think that's something that the city should also consider going in as a co-investor on some of the pre-development costs as well. It shows that we have buy-in, it takes financial burden off of you all. If we are truly accelerating this in terms of our CIP, we should be in at the preliminary development stage.
As the council thinks about direction or kind of, you know, where we land here, I need to make sure that we have direction enough to develop an MOU. And I guess I'll check in with Rotary and if you can't answer this right now, that's okay, we can keep that, that going too, but is the, is the option, do you know if the option of not having the community room is an option for Rotary or is that, that's kind of what you need to make this work for your home? Then we need to know that because I wanna check in with the council members at least in terms of developing the MOU. If, if that's fundamental, then we need to, need to know that.
I wanna say something, I mean, I don't think it's the city's responsibility to give to, for Rotary's home. I'm glad if they could use it, but I think we need to be cognizant of what this is. And if we're saying it's Rotary's home, I don't know that that's in the, you know, is in the
And I would.
best interest of the entire community.
And I would also say that we would move forward, your staff would move forward with those principles that are in the staff communication. Which is, I think, clear that this is a city facility with all of those, those points that we would, you know, keep. But I, I think that in terms of a partnership, that's what, you know, Mayor, we can think of, 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 of other strategies for restoring the Bemis House. But I think in terms of the question of partnership tonight, it feels like we need to know if the, if, if that's, if the, the community space is what the, I'll say it this way, is what the Rotary is interested in contributing to. Then um we need to know if there's council support for us to develop our partnership for that contribution to a community's space.
The question is, is the community room a deal breaker?
Well, going back to the beginning, three years ago, the original vision, I don't have the historical knowledge that Gene does, was to expand house.
And then had historical problems, cause from the front with that big thing in the back, it looked.
Well, I, I don't know what I pictured, but it was some sort of an expansion in the back, glass atrium. And, and that apparently can't be done. There's a garage back there. So then that kind of evolved into this idea of a separate structure. And um, I don't know. I mean, I'd have to talk to the club, but the whole point of this was to get a place to hold our meetings, so.
So, yeah, the community room is the deal breaker.
Well, I know it's into the weeds, but I do think the neighborhood has concerns. If Rotary has a meeting there at least once a week, if not twice a week, um, all, any other organizations are gonna have meetings there, the city's gonna have meetings there. It's, I mean, it sounds like it could be a, a five or six day a week.
Well, living over there as you do, I just thought a little more activity.
I'm not, I'm not saying I disagree. I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea, but I'm just thinking we have, as city council, we have to think about everyone involved, not just one aspect involved.
That's why I think we need to also look at the different communities involved. Okay, there's the residential community and there's the service communities, et cetera, so.
I agree. And I think that that conversation hasn't evolved enough for us to make a very informed decision. I'm willing to keep continuing this discussion and working towards something, but I don't know.
I know Pat's frustrated that it's not moving faster and probably Rotary is too, but I think we need to do our geology before we um go through with an agreement.
We could have an agreement. I just, I don't think we can agree to, or I can't agree to promise that there'll be a new building on this side. I can agree that we will explore that.
Does everyone wanna at least continue this conversation and not wait thirty months but come back, um, at least with a new council sooner rather than later? To kind of flesh out some more?
Let's give, get, give staff some direction. I mean, you're, you're voicing your opinion there, but you have three people, I think, that are talking and then uh four right there, so.
We won't be here next time.
Additional structure without any issues, I, I think, you know, just that rendering there alone just would, would be a whole run for that.
But we have consensus to continue with an MOU of some sort and I think there was at least four to kinda work towards this goal of a community room. Um, and we can come back to council, we'll have to.
But it stipulates that no promise of a community room.
No promises tonight for.
I'm just trying to get staff direction.
That this MOU not include any architectural renderings, any building new stuff? Just the fact that you will discuss it and come to some sort of term via money and utilization.
I think Rotary needs to have some more concrete of this is what it will be, cause they're not gonna say, can we raise seven million dollars for a discussion?
No, that wasn't what I was suggesting. I was saying, the M, the parameters of the MOU is that you lay out the operational and usage.
Of what?
Discussions of the renovation. Prior, don't focus on the, don't focus on the structure. You can fo, you can have a discussion about structure. You don't need to put those parameters into an MOU.
Structure is the crux of the argument.
But how big a structure and when it's used and like where it's, how it's oriented. This is all in the debate. Like, there's no need to put that in there.
We're not, I don't think we're talking about, I think it's the, like what Robert said, the presence or absence of a structure, not any of the details of it. If you're vaguely somewhat, I mean, I think you have.
Majority of council, yeah, to keep the conversation going, develop and develop an MOU that comes back to council for further discussion along the lines of the, the conversation that we had.
Do a different council, you'll have fun with that.
Right, we'll do this again.
Will, will it be a different council or can you do it?
It will be a different council.
That's okay.
The ship can sink at any time.
Yeah.
So, I wanna, I, I just wanna say quickly, like personally, someone living two blocks away from there, I think this, and, and just as a member of our community, I think that this would be great, a great addition to our city. So however, the community engagement piece is a concern for me. It's my neighborhood and my city that I, I represent. So I'm, I, I wanna just express my appreciation for all the work that you put into this and the stake that you're willing to put into it.
And I'll say for the public, if I'm a mayor, um, any agreement that the city council agrees to would have to take place in a, a re- regular meeting. So there would be public comment and I, I think we would, we would, could bring that back even in a draft format so that the public, uh, can, so the neighborhood can be directly involved at that time, so.
I think we'll get some emails ahead of that.
You already have some.
We just wanna be sure that we're transparent and that everybody's aware and we don't have people coming back to us.
Well, thank you. I don't think it's exactly what you were hoping to be, but.
Have a piece of chocolate. Piece of chocolate. That's all I got, that's really all I got to offer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene, yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Is constantly the break while we switch out? Well, let's take a quick five-minute break.
I would question your wisdom if you did.
A union smoke break, need my union smoke break.
Oh.
Just talking to her. All right, moving on to local partnership.
Thanks, mayor, so we have an annual grants program, but in our budget to the tune of seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars. We also have the remaining stadium district grants. And this project is an effort of the city manager's office, and it's led by Lucy Lucero, who puts a great deal of of effort. And care into this project every year. So with that in mind, I'm gonna turn it over to Lucy and Mike for an overview of the program. And we're asking for your consideration and direction on grants. We're not making decisions in final, but we would bring your direction back to you at your next meeting for approval of this, of next year's grants. Lucy, take it away.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for completing your score sheet and giving the direction on how you want to award the funding.
And I want to thank you for all the extra information that you gave us to help make our decisions, it was very helpful. Yeah, it seemed like it was a lot easier this year, right? It seemed like that to me.
The process, the things you did look great.
So. We have. One hundred eleven thousand three hundred thirty-four approximately left in the stadium district funding. And I am going to ask if we could agree on who would get the remaining funds depending on what interest we have in January. Or if we don't give, cut the checks until the end of January or February. We have seventy-two thousand nine hundred in local partnership funding. We had thirty applications received, seven in-kind, and then for stadium district funding, we had nineteen applications received. And we have a history of all the decisions we made and all of the direction that council gave us. On screen. So. The grant recipients are required to sign a grant agreement and give us a report every six months until all the money is spent. They have eighteen months to spend it, or it has to come back to us. So far, no one has not spent their money. And I don't always get the grant reports right away, but I have emailed and everybody has submitted one. So I am not, I'm not shy about pestering for things. So we did agree, or council agreed, that we can only have, give one grant per applicant, whether it be an arts and culture. Funding grant, local partnership funding, or stadium district funding. That's why a couple of our community events were not going to be funded because they already received money from arts and culture.
Does that preclude them from applying for both and hoping to get one or the other, or they have to pick one that they're going after?
They can apply for.
Yeah, yeah.
They can apply for.
What matters is kind of the order of events, because arts and culture got dispersed first.
Yeah.
And so.
They basically get a second shot if they didn't get.
Yeah, but if they get arts and culture, then they don't get what they applied for the other ones.
Lucy, are you suggesting with that extra money we have that we give it to one or just disperse it among all of them, like? That we are giving.
Yes or yes?
It's whatever you'd like, but for a thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars, it would be a lot less work to do thirty contracts. Than it would be, or nineteen contracts, to just do one instead of nineteen.
I think what Pam was suggesting, just divide that one thousand divided by nineteen and just add, add a two hundred, or whatever it is.
I don't know.
We can do that.
That's what you're, yeah.
That was just one suggestion.
That's a good idea.
All right, but do you have.
Eighty bucks each.
Do you have an idea? I mean, do you have a recommendation?
That's what I'm asking the group.
That makes sense to us if we can just give a little extra.
To everybody.
I'm 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 agree, I'm agree with that idea.
Same contract.
Spread it out.
Is it a different contract, or is it just adding on the same?
Technically.
To everybody that we're giving something to.
Well, the city attorney makes a good point, because I think, we were thinking if that's not additional contract, but he's saying it would be nineteen additional amendments.
I mean, you're amending a contract.
So then maybe not doing it in that way would make sense.
That's what I was asking, so if we, we don't have to mend one contract if we gave that thousand to one person, to one organization.
Or I can wait until January and find out exactly how much.
Discuss it when we get to the stadium fund, yeah.
Okay, so four or more council members needed to approve an award in order for it to be in the recommended, right? Excuse me, recommendation column. We averaged to the nearest fifty dollars. I reduced the local partnership funding by five percent. Oops, sorry, what did I do? By five percent, just to stay within budget. So we came up with seventy-two thousand five hundred and fifty, so you will have an extra, what, three hundred and fifty in the budget for that. And then we reduced stadium district funding by twenty percent, and that gets us within one thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars of the budget. We had. So what I'm asking council for is whether or not you agree with with the recommendations, the combined. For both grants. The seventy-two five hundred and fifty for local partnership funding and the one hundred and ten thousand for stadium district funding. And then you just recommended that we split whatever's left in interest by each recipient.
Have those contracts already been done, Reed? Is that why you're?
No.
Okay.
We would normally do them before the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So it's not, oh, it's not extra work or anything.
They didn't know how much, the money will know the money until.
The interest hasn't finished accumulating for us to have the final.
I won't do the contracts in December then, I'll have to bring them in.
That's the stadium fund, right? Because it's interest.
So we can.
It's, we're estimating about a thousand dollars.
Give it three thousand.
Yeah, thousand.
I mean, would that be also easier to keep it in, how's in, like, does the library have a youth event? We could just give them a thousand dollars.
We haven't done any internal awards from stadium, have we?
We did in twenty twenty-three, I think we gave five thousand to the library.
We did.
And they bought games, and they bought a shelf to keep all the games.
Teen services, okay.
Would that, that would be easier then, okay?
So we could award it the way she has it broken down, twenty percent reduction, and then, and use whatever is left to the library use services.
Should be approximately a thousand dollars.
Somebody on the library staff could write the report.
Yeah.
And then Reed doesn't have to do an additional contract.
I was gonna say, my my kids' hockey programs are youth.
And they live in the city, right?
The Betsy and Youth Foundation, is that what the?
The Human Fund.
The Kettering Lake Youth Fund, we can do that. Thank you for laughing, I appreciate that. I think, I I, whatever's easiest, and that sounds the easiest option, so I'm, and I, thank you very much for your work.
Great job.
All good.
Good job.
Awesome.
Move forward.
You didn't know about the contract.
So one, one other question that we were hoping to get some guidance on is we get approached regularly for, to see if city council wants to sponsor a table at an event. Some people even apply for these grant funds for that. This year, we said, let's take those out of the application pool, and we can just award those from the city council funds. When we sponsor, from the outreach funds, yeah. So we want to make sure that that was, everybody agrees.
How much is in the outreach fund?
The annual.
Like thirty thousand or something like that.
I have most of it earmarked, but there's usually five, six thousand that I don't have.
But that would be good for how many events?
It depends, some events cost more than others, like, like, like the High Line Canal service is a little more expensive than North Littleton Promise. But there, so, but as long as that approach is good with you, we can propose, and then you can say, yep, this, these are the ones we want to sponsor for the next year.
That's the only question I had or asked was with the spreadsheets, with the ones that have, you know, that have the application, and it's like, oh, already funded by. Arts and Culture Board, if we can kind of move those to a separate thing, so where they're all together, and then the same thing with the council outreach ones, kind of move them to their own kind of category. So it's all locked together, so it's not like every other.
That makes sense.
That's all, nothing.
What about doing that for the in-kind?
And, yeah, and the in-kind, yeah.
So we can just go, in most cases, we're going, yes, 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 yes.
Some options, no, no, no.
But yeah, I mean, not a big change.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so we want to refine the process on how we sponsor events and tables, and we'll use the council outreach funding for that.
And until that, until we run out of, when we start approaching the, that total amount, then I think we need to schedule a conversation, but it sounds.
And with that, can you also, rather than just the ones that apply for this? Have a list of all the, just so council have a kind of.
Historically, this.
Hopefully discussion, sort of discussion at least, so it's there, like, these are the events that council outreach is going to for. I think it's not necessarily transparent, that would make a little more transparent.
I think we should do it strategically, so we know what we can expect for the year, and if it's over the five thousand that's left, then we can pick and choose. But not wait until we go, oh, my goodness, we're out of money.
Put things like that, I'm sure staff says, we should do this, and it's not a request, but everything that's in the council outreach fund is part of that, even if it's not an application of a grant. Makes sense?
The next question is, who wants to sign all the award letters? Would you like to sign Kyle, or would you like to Jim?
When are they gonna be ready?
I'm happy to.
I, let's see, what's today, Thursday?
Okay.
So before the eighteen, no one suggests.
Oh, I I was thinking about Monday.
The next, the next week or so.
Sure.
It's not gonna take me a month to sign them.
Well, I don't know if she would have them ready in a month, it's gonna be ready in December or?
I'll sign anything if you need it, but I think I'm lowest on the totem pole.
Bean transfer, I'll have your bean to mine, Patrick, remember?
We have auto pens.
That was funny.
Solid auto pen, Jim. Thank you very much, we appreciate you so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot for your work, Lucy, you made it so smooth.
Yeah.
It makes it feel like all the work you put in was not that much with how quickly we just.
Yeah, hopefully the lack of discussion.
All the background, all that.
That's right, so, I mean.
No, no law of discussion.
You can be the deputy finance director now with all this work.
Thank you.
All right, and you guys both doing here for the next one?
Just me.
Just Mike.
Thank you, Lucy.
You're welcome.
You're free to, you're free to escape, I mean, please.
Can Lucy do this one too? Colleen did this one, but unfortunately, she's not available tonight.
So, kind of a update on boards and commissions?
This one came out of council's retreats. And I will just turn over to Mike, because I think he'll point out the, the topics that we heard then and where we are with them.
Excellent, and really, starting back in April of, of, of twenty twenty-three, council said, we want to have stronger communications and, and relationships with our boards and commissions. And that kind of kickstarted a, a series of evolution of, of how we tried to facilitate that. We've had updates since then. In, in February of last year, we, we actually made some changes, consolidated some boards, changed naming conventions, those kind of things. Actually, also, towards the end of twenty twenty-four, we had even discussions about what are the purpose of the, the boards and commissions? And, you know, when, when the appropriate time to talk about all that is, we tried to add in this, this current semi-annual report to council on boards and commissions, what the purposes of each board and commission were, and, and how they're aligning with Horizon twenty twenty-seven strategic plan. So hopefully that gives you the information to best evaluate, are we utilizing these boards and commissions appropriately, are they adding value? Good, good use of everybody's time. And then specifically, we had a discussion late in the process about boards and commissions, and we said, we shouldn't have this discussion after we've started recruitment. So let's have those discussions before we start recruitment, if there's going to be any changes that you wanted to consider. Just as an example, for this upcoming year, we have almost two dozen appointments or, and or reappointments that will need to be made for, for, if we keep the current boards and commissions as constituted with a number of seats and everything for, for each board and commission. So there are a couple of things we, we'd love for you to include in your conversation about boards and commissions. One of those is, do you like interviewing all of the applicants who are applying for reappointment? So at that point in time, you have a general idea of, of the individuals, because they've been serving on these boards and commissions for a period of time. And so if they're interested in serving again, could you evaluate their re, reappointment without having to meet with them? That would significantly reduce the number of interviews that need to be conducted if that was something that was appropriate.
Do you want us to answer that question now or at the end of the conversation?
However you want to do it, yeah.
So I, I understand your point, but I feel like we got valuable information from the people being reappointed on the, on how well the boards are working, or what were the challenges and successes? And so while I don't want to know their background like we do with the new person, I do like that as an opportunity for feedback on what was going on.
I don't think it'd reduce that much time or take that much off, I mean, it's a three-day process.
Two to three nights depending on the number of chapters, or free food.
I mean, I'm all for streamlining the process, but I do think, you know, at some things, not every council member will have interviewed those people, and not every current member that applies for reappointment gets reappointed. So I do think having the interviews, unless for some reason we have, I mean, the only hard thing is if we ever have like a hundred and fifty applicants for thirty spots, then we might have to have a discussion about that, but it's been pretty close, we've had, you know, a handful that don't get appointed.
I think, you know, having everyone go through the exact same process every time and not getting a pass on, having prior, previous, it seems fair. I will say that there are other ways to do this than just like a straight-up in-person interview, I mean, the questions are, that are asked are all the same, right? Like, there's a little bit of back and forth, but you might consider doing just like a recorded, like, a recorded response from the applicants, where it's like they answer questions in their own words and their own timing, and then council can then ultimately review them. Again, if you're okay giving up the idea of having back and forth and rebuttal, which we don't really have a whole lot of time for anyway.
Sorry, I mean, I see benefit for the community that, you know, the one or two people that show up to watch those, if it's that way, there's not as much transparency on who's applying.
You could easily post the videos.
Yeah, I would, I would rather, if we want to streamline it, allow people to do remote interviews than do pre-recorded interviews, because I do value the interaction with the people, even if it's, even if it's, you're right, time limited. And, and I also feel like it, we're recognizing them for their willingness to volunteer by giving them some of our time.
Word streamlining is getting used a lot, I know it takes a lot of time, but like, that's why we're here.
Making the bucks.
I have no process, I have no problem with the current process and, and re-interviewing.
Did you go through it last year?
I went through this last one.
Yeah, just want to make sure you're saying it.
I, I, this, I personally enjoyed it quite a lot.
I enjoy it too, I don't feel like I get to interact with all the boards, so I don't, it helps to see who's on what and sort people out a little bit. I agree.
So I hear support for continuing the process that we've done in the past next year.
Unless there's just a cast, an overwhelming number.
We may need to adapt it, certainly you have that prerogative, so we can, we can, once we see the level of interest, we can discuss if there's any adoptions that you'd like to see. But Colleen specifically wanted to make sure that you understood that, that, that there's tradition as opposed to code dictating the process. So that, it, it is up to the council to decide what, how best to make that happen. So she also reminded us, or wants to remind us that, that, that we did, we, we constituted a charter review committee this year using a different process from how we appointed all the rest of our boards and commissions. And it seemed like there was some discussion, do you want to potentially, you know, give staff direction that we can record, so that the next time a charter review committee or any ad hoc committee is, is, is put into place, that instead of having it be automatic appointments or automatic nominations, voted on by body, that there's some kind of an interview or ready process or?
I would suggest that next time we do that, we just lump it in if it's every five years or ten years.
Do it as part of the process.
As part of this process.
So people apply during this period, oh, I like that a lot.
Yeah, second.
Look at that, good idea, Kyle.
Happen every once in a while.
You, you, there's your once.
To the committees that are happening, that are.
Front and center of the campaign.
Usually there's, there is an ad hoc task force or something.
And this one, and hopefully, I mean, the, we have, I mean, the idea, it had been ten years since the last charter review committee. I think every ten years makes sense, or if it's five years, but when we say, hey, we're gonna have a charter review committee coming up, even if it's been eight years, just say we're lining up with this.
What if we have something where we want to have some kind of committee, we don't decide until the end of Q one, and we want to implement it? Could we just have this kind of process, like a call for entries?
Sure.
I, I, in general, I agree with both things, wrap, wrap it in, but I like this process better than the process we used for the charter review.
So it could be off-cycle, but the same process?
Same process, and we'd have to promote it, do the same thing, have applications.
I like consistency.
Yeah, I agree.
That's the guidance we're, we're inviting, so thank you. So do you have any other comments, conversations, questions on boards and commissions that you'd like to discuss or give?
I do.
I do, but the one I had was, what we did this year, we limited the number of people we interviewed. That's kind of new. We, we didn't interview everybody that applied, we, we did some preliminary analysis, so to speak, and only interviewed a select number.
Kind of like we did with the grant process, where a, a certain, certain amount of council members had to say, we want to interview them, and one of them would come through.
So I don't know what the numbers were, but we had ninety applicants, and we said, realistically, we wanted to keep it to three nights, we interviewed six, whatever it was.
So you think that keeping that pattern?
I don't know, I open it up to.
Trying.
The council, but I thought that was.
I think that would be up to the council and say, hey, we have, you know, if they want to add extra five, or if it's forty extra ones, like, hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna appoint a third of these people.
And how did we select the?
The ones to interview?
At least four, yeah.
We just voted.
Okay.
We just said we want to have, and that's whoever had enough to, yeah.
And that was, that process worked.
I'd say it makes sense to stick with that.
Okay, sorry, I.
No, the thing that I had is, I was hoping for a little bit more robust, kind of, you know, duties for some of these, like, I know, like Pam and I have talked about, like, hey, you know, the historic preservation, it just says quasi-judicial ongoing. I think to lay out some of these, some of the things that some of these bodies can do, like, hey, we want them to also be advisory in certain regards. We want planning to be advisory, you know, and try to kind of give a little bit more flushed out of what that quasi-judicial role is, and the advisory role, and especially as we're trying to do more proactive community engagement. These are community members, they can help us with things out in the community if we, you know, go to them before it comes to council, and then, you know, council's, yeah, we want to do it, send it back to them. I think having it through the process, oh, this, you know, this is what Transportation Board said that they want, they think we should do. So I think we need to build that into the staff's process of getting to these boards proactively, and then also identifying which the quasi-judicial ones, do they only behave quasi-judicial? Like, I'll just say, a licensing commission, you know, I think we could have some advisory advisement from them on things if we were going to change, you know, liquor code or recreational marijuana code. We would want them to provide their expertise in an advisory fashion to council. And I didn't, I didn't see that, that's what I kind of thought I asked for back in the retreat.
I would go so far as, and, and this is what's been done informally, is that they have a work plan, that they work with staff to, on projects. So you limit the, you, based on the capacity of staff and what they have to do, but they coordinate it with the other departments internally and with council. So they have their work plans, that they come up with the ideas for a lot of that stuff. And I would say, well, Arts and Culture does that, but also HPC and Planning Commission at a minimum, and I don't know what other boards make sense. Next Gen already does that, oh, Transportation.
Are you asking for the plan to be part of the report? Is that what you're asking for?
I would love that.
Mike, could you speak to that?
Yeah, so, so, and I apologize, because I, I didn't get these out to you really quick, but in, one of the items in your packet for this meeting includes the semi-annual report, and then, and one, one of them was missing, TMB, but it, it has been emailed to you earlier today, so, so you can, you can review it, and like, TMB specifically very clearly tried to give you what they plan on, what they're, what they're working on in the next six months.
There are work plan notes, I believe, for all, for all.
We, we tried for all of them.
They have the work plan notes, but I'm thinking almost like a one-pager that anyone in the public can look at and say, okay, this is what Planning Commission does.
Sure.
Quasi-judicial on land use decisions and this, their advisory onto council on this, they, they can provide information on this.
So like our webpage, when you click on boards and commissions, it gives a description of each board and commission, and you'd like that to be flushed out more to include the advisory.
Make sure that it's clear that it's advisory on policy matters.
It's not, it, it probably is not as, that broad currently.
You probably have a template for the work plan, I know, when I was on HPC, we did, I'd like to see the work plan. It's, it's like a Excel spreadsheet, you know, what the topic is, you know, when they started, priority, and all that stuff.
I think we, what we've done for this time, and, you know, we can get to that level, but we heard council's direction for that work planning piece, and I believe each of the, the boards and commissions had that discussion, they, they set out the things that they want to work on for next year. Those are in the report that you have, I don't know that it is kind of spreadsheet format, but I think we can work, we can work toward that. I think we wanted to just build that practice this year of at least.
Get in the report.
And syncing that up with staff so that there's.
Maybe that's a down-the-road thing.
Yeah, this, this was a great first step.
Yeah.
Really thankful for your work and the work of the chairs, because I think for the ones I'm in, the chairs.
Absolutely.
So I'm very grateful for their work.
And I just wanted to be explicit, because I think there has been some differences between council's vision and staff's vision of what some of these boards are set up to do and what they should do. And I want that, so we can have that clearly, yeah, I'm talking about you. Just for, for my own notification, who, who is this being written for?
Who, who needs the information, who are we writing it for?
So I think it's one for council, but also for the general public, so they know, and for the, the, the boards that, hey, this is, when we say, oh, we want HPB to provide us information on X, Y, Z, what it is, I think there's been some, the staff's like, that's not their role, and council or that board's saying, well, we want it to be their role. And so I think we need to have some more clear definition of what their roles are, so we don't have this tension where it's like, staff's like, no, you can't do that. But if the council wants them to do that, or, or vice versa, if they don't want, if they don't want to do something, council's like, with Next Gen, like, hey, council wants you to do this, and they're like, no, we don't want to do that. I think we need to have some more.
I'll say, from our standpoint, the work planning is a step in that direction. And we, I think we've been clear that all of the boards, you know, are those policy advisors, we just need to be respectful of the quasi responsibilities that, that some of them have. And, you know, have the, the pro, you know, we just can't, we, we have to have the plans for these, the policy projects, but they can do both.
But sometimes their meetings are canceled, and they could have a study session, I mean, I, I don't mean to be trite, but when I was chair of HPB, it was a spreadsheet, it was easy, I mean, it had maybe fifteen lines on it. And we, and, you know, when it starts and finishes, and I gave, we gave input to the staff member, the staff member owned the spreadsheet, I did not own it. And on those meetings nights where we didn't have a lot, or as part of the meeting where we didn't have a lot to do, we would address these things and, and shift them, that's done, that's not really important anymore. And, and they were, they came from us, I mean, and staff coordinated on the back end with the rest of staff, so that we were coordinating with council to some extent.
And I think like some of the things we've heard in public comment, like with our building codes, it was like, well, why did the appeals and adjustment board, or commission, I guess now, not review that? I mean, that would be a good, you know, just a step to say, hey, they're the ones that are going to be making decisions on variances to these codes. They should have at least, you know, present it to them, get some feedback from them, because in theory, they have some expertise on that, and then come to council. So those are the kind of advisory things that I don't think are quite explicit.
And then, you know, human beings are messy, and so, you know, there's gonna be some, some members of some boards that are very excited for, you know, different elements, and some members that are like, nope, not us. And, and so you, you saw this year, TMB take a real active role in engagement with the community in, in a variety of ways, and they're really geared, geared up to continue that. And then you had another board just this last week, who were like, we're not here for community engagement.
And that's, that's fine, but I think if we have some of these roles written down, it's not just institutional knowledge of like, well, when I was on this board ten years ago, and half of the people are gone, it's like, well, we don't do it. If we, we need to have things written down, we can always tweak that maybe.
But clarifying rules is, is really helpful for everybody. Okay, thanks. We're getting, we're getting, we're, we're moving in that direction, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we just wrote the book on roles and roles of engagement or something like that, or conduct.
Anything else?
I don't think we had any other policy questions from March.
So we'll, we'll, we'll begin planning for the recruitment of boards and commissions as they're currently constituted with the seats and whatnot, using a similar process as we did last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks to Colleen for her work.
Thank you very much.
Right now, it's a party on, Wayne.
Council, any updated report? I had something to say, but I can't remember what it was, so I'm not gonna say anything. There's a couple ribbon cuttings this week, was it Dirt? There's a bank, is it tomorrow? Is that where the bank is?
Tomorrow, that's Dirt.
Uh, Littleton Leadership Academy has their graduation on.
So we have that that Friday.
Yeah.
I got an email from some chick named.
Central, four to six.
Family Bank is four to.
Academy Bank.
She's tough that.
Academy Bank.
Yeah, four to six. I think the ribbon cutting's at five.
I think Dirt is four-ten.
Like King Supers. King Supers.
We three can come, but the formal part doesn't start till like four-ten. Three thirty can come, but the formal part doesn't start till like four-ten.
Any updated reports? Any updates? City Attorney?
Yes. As you may have heard, yesterday, the city of Littleton withdrew our petition that was filed in the district court. And the primary reason for doing so is that it did not appear as if the city was gonna be able to get an answer on the merits of some of the questions that the city has about the ballot question prior to the election. So, right now, there, there's no petition. The court granted the most, the motion to dismiss. It was a voluntary withdrawal, voluntary dismissal on the part of the city. We did reach out to RIL and got their consent. So it was kind of a stipulation to withdraw the petition. So just based upon the timing and the uncertainty of the election results, that was the decision that was made. We were gonna have to do a few things as we went forward and it became pretty apparent that a court wasn't gonna be able to rule on the merits. The actual questions, we would have had to have gone through filing what's called a declaratory judgment, which is a different type of legal proceeding. As council knows, we decided to go under a brand-new legislative statute that came out that went into effect in August. It was kind of the anti-growth statute. We wanted to see if we could get a determination on this, so that's why we went that route. We didn't go the declaratory judgment route because the thought was is that a court would say that it was not right. Come back to us if this passes and then we can talk about it. So that was one of the reasons why we didn't do that route. As we went through, forward in this process and as we had our status conference last Thursday, you know, the court seemed to indicate to us or the take, one of the takeaways was that a declaratory judgment action would probably be more appropriate, in which case you may as well wait and find out if, if the question actually passes. So, um, so that's where we are. So, but I want to make clear that the city's decision to withdraw the petition does not